I think we're ready to get started. I want to thank everybody for joining us tonight to the session of the Planning and Zoning Commission. To start with, I've asked Michelle to lead us in the pledge.
Please, Joyce.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first order of business tonight will be the recording of our minutes. Does anybody have a chance to review those?
I move that we approve the minutes from June.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Those minutes can be set. The first order of business, I guess, is there any reason to go out of order tonight, Dave or Brandon? You just want to follow the order we have? Okay. First order of business is then a minor plat amendment and zone change. This is a public hearing.
Thank you. As we can see, the part of town that we're looking at, if we want to advance to the next slide, we're looking at three properties. The applicants had looked to adjust some property lines and staff in reviewing it. Notice there were some issues as far as average lot sizes with the zoning, not necessarily at the fault of the applicant, but some actions and decisions made in the past as far as the property developed on the east bench. And so what we have is a request to adjust some property lines, but in order to bring those lots into conformance, the DRC did feel it would be necessary to propose a rezone to those properties, hence the request that you have before you being dual in nature, both a minor plat amendment, which approval is contingent upon the city council taking action on the zone change. Let's go to the next slide, please. So the area is predominantly R19, and so we'd be looking at just the three lots shifting to the R18. But as indicated in the staff report, there's no additional lots that are being created, no change in the density. It's all, all three are existing residences, just looking to clean up property lines and adjust some property lines.
Are those the property lines, the ones that are proposed, the ones that the property owners currently perceive to be their property lines? Is it the same?
Yes and no. Yes, in the sense that they're, they're cleaning up where they feel the property lines have existed, but then also in addition to that, there's an adjustment between lot two and three that's being proposed.
And are the owners of lots two and three okay with this proposal?
Yes.
Are we?
Is that us?
Is that us?
That's not you.
Okay.
What were the purposes that these lots were being used for that now we necessitate a change and what is proposed for those lots now? If this is, if this is approved?
What brought it to our attention was the request to adjust some property lines. And so in doing that, we looked and looked at the lot sizes and looked at the history of the zoning and looked at the plating of the lots and how that changed over the years to get to where we are today. And so what we're proposing today was clean up those past actions and solidify where the property lines are.
Single-family homes before, single-family homes now?
Yep.
Just bring it into conformity to what it really is.
What it currently exists as, yes.
Right.
There's no new construction going to be happening, just going, just cleaning it up. Okay.
Was it approved as R19 MPD? Is that why they have lots that are not conforming with the R19?
No. I didn't bring the presentation, but we did go through the history with the DRC. You can see the neighboring lots to the east, orient, north to south. At one point, these corner lots were subdivided east and west, and then it was subdivided north and south to get the additional lot. And so it's just kind of a peculiar history.
Is this anything that will affect any neighbors, any, but change anybody's way of life? Anything you notice?
Not that we're contemplating.
Change anything if you were to sell your land, your property?
Yeah. Thank you.
Well, now hold it up to public hearing. If anybody has anything to come up and say about this matter, we'd welcome you to come up and speak in the microphone. If you've come up, please, if you'd state your name and if, like, if you're one of the property owners, please tell us which lot you're, you're speaking about.
Hi, my name's Janely Banks, and I live in the odd-shaped lot, the one with the pie wedge on it. So I don't understand the difference between R1 and R9. Could you explain that to me?
It's the size of the, the size of your lot to have the dwelling on. So it's just changing it from 9,000 to 8,000, right? Square.
So it doesn't, it doesn't change anything else about zoning? It's just that they can change the size of the lot?
It is.
It is a zone change.
That is a zone.
So R19 allows as a permitted use, and the staff may correct me if I'm wrong, but as a permitted application in the R19 zone, you can have a lot that's 9,000 square feet or larger, and it would be approved administratively. That would be your property right within the R19 zone. In the R18 zone, the same is true at 8,000 square feet and above.
Okay. And so that's, that we were at the smallest that we could be on those lots, the way they divided them, those two lots on the corners.
Yes, and that was my question a little earlier to Mr. Snyder's. I was wondering if it was approved as an R19 with an MPD, and I'm sorry if that might not make sense to you, but...
Did not. Sorry, I don't know anything about zoning.
No, it's all good. It's a good question.
Joseph knows too much.
And then by decreasing that, does that affect the property values of the surrounding lots or not where we're, where we are at this point? What does it do to the values of the other properties?
They are.
That is a question I'm not going to answer because I don't know property values and how it'll affect property values definitively. I'd be happy to speculate.
Thank you.
I am not happy to speculate.
The county assessor is the one who would appraise the value of the properties. My assumption is where there's no change in the use, just the cleaning up of the properties. The only change should be miniscule in the sense that we're not increasing or decreasing the size of the lot severely. That's my speculation.
So my understanding, we are decreasing the size of the, I guess that's lot two?
Yeah, the middle one.
We are decreasing it?
Slightly, yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would just add to that, that if there is a maybe proportionate decrease in the property value of one of the properties, there would be a proportionate increase with one of the others. I mean, we're talking about the same area, same taxable area and different things like that on the whole. So that's the only logic that I can maybe apply here.
But your question was specific to adjacent neighbors. They shouldn't have an impact. According to what Brandon's saying, there should be any impact because theirs is not actually changing. It'd only be the lots that are affected by the square footage of their lot.
Which is negligible.
Anybody have anything to say on this matter? Okay, we'll close public hearing. Commissioners, anybody have any questions for staff or for anybody else?
I have a question for staff, but I don't know if they know. Was it approved as an R19 MPD? And if so, it doesn't, I don't know if we need to change the zoning. It wasn't, that's why. All right. Thank you.
Anybody else? If anybody has anything to say on this matter? Okay, we'll close public hearing. Commissioners, anybody have any questions for staff or for anybody else?
I have a question for staff, but I don't know if they know. Was it approved as an R19 MPD? And if so, it doesn't, I don't know if we need to change the zoning. It wasn't, that's why. All right. Thank you.
Anybody else? If anybody has anything to say on this matter? Okay, we'll close public hearing. Commissioners, anybody have any questions for staff or for anybody else?
I have a question for staff, but I don't know if they know. Was it approved as an R19 MPD? And if so, it doesn't, I don't know if we need to change the zoning. It wasn't, that's why. All right. Thank you.
Anybody else? If anybody has anything to say on this matter? Okay, we'll close public hearing. Commissioners, anybody have any questions for staff or for anybody else?
I have a question for staff, but I don't know if they know. Was it approved as an R19 MPD? And if so, it doesn't, I don't know if we need to change the zoning. It wasn't, that's why. All right. Thank you.
Anybody else? If anybody has anything to say on this matter? Okay, we'll close public hearing. Commissioners, anybody have any questions for staff or for anybody else?
I have a question for staff, but I don't know if they know. Was it approved as an R19 MPD? And if so, it doesn't, I don't know if we need to change the zoning. It wasn't, that's why. All right. Thank you.
Anybody else? If anybody has anything to say on this matter? Okay, we'll close public hearing. Commissioners, anybody have any questions for staff or for anybody else?
I have a question for staff, but I don't know if they know. Was it approved as an R19 MPD? And if so, it doesn't, I don't know if we need to change the zoning. It wasn't, that's why. All right. Thank you.
Anybody else? If anybody has anything to say on this matter? Okay, we'll close public hearing. Commissioners, anybody have any questions for staff or for anybody else?
I have a question for staff, but I don't know if they know. Was it approved as an R19 MPD? And if so, it doesn't, I don't know if we need to change the zoning. It wasn't, that's why. All right. Thank you.
Anybody else? If anybody has anything to say on this matter? Okay, we'll close public hearing. Commissioners, anybody have any questions for staff or for anybody else?
I have a question for staff, but I don't know if they know. Was it approved as an R19 MPD? And if so, it doesn't, I don't know if we need to change the zoning. It wasn't, that's why. All right. Thank you.
Anybody else? If anybody has anything to say on this matter? Okay, we'll close public hearing. Commissioners, anybody have any questions for staff or for anybody else?
I have a question for staff, but I don't know if they know. Was it approved as an R19 MPD? And if so, it doesn't, I don't know if we need to change the zoning. It wasn't, that's why. All right. Thank you.
Anybody else? If anybody has anything to say on this matter? Okay, we'll close public hearing. Commissioners, anybody have any questions for staff or for anybody else?
I have a question for staff, but I don't know if they know. Was it approved as an R19 MPD? And if so, it doesn't, I don't know if we need to change the zoning. It wasn't, that's why. All right. Thank you.
Anybody else? If anybody has anything to say on this matter? Okay, we'll close public hearing. Commissioners, anybody have any questions for staff or for anybody else?
I have a question for staff, but I don't know if they know. Was it approved as an R19 MPD? And if so, it doesn't, I don't know if we need to change the zoning. It wasn't, that's why. All right. Thank you.
Anybody else? If anybody has anything to say on this matter? Okay, we'll close public hearing. Commissioners, anybody have any questions for staff or for anybody else?
I have a question for staff, but I don't know if they know. Was it approved as an R19 MPD? And if so, it doesn't, I don't know if we need to change the zoning. It wasn't, that's why. All right. Thank you.
Anybody else? If anybody has anything to say on this matter? Okay, we'll close public hearing. Commissioners, anybody have any questions for staff or for anybody else?
I have a question for staff, but I don't know if they know. Was it approved as an R19 MPD? And if so, it doesn't, I don't know if we need to change the zoning. It wasn't, that's why. All right. Thank you.
Anybody else? If anybody has anything to say on this matter? Okay, we'll close public hearing. Commissioners, anybody have any questions for staff or for anybody else?
I have a question for staff, but I don't know if they know. Was it approved as an R19 MPD? And if so, it doesn't, I don't know if we need to change the zoning. It wasn't, that's why. All right. Thank you.
Anybody else? If anybody has anything to say on this matter? Okay, we'll close public hearing. Commissioners, anybody have any questions for staff or for anybody else?
I have a question for staff, but I don't know if they know. Was it approved as an R19 MPD? And if so, it doesn't, I don't know if we need to change the zoning. It wasn't, that's why. All right. Thank you.
Anybody else? If anybody has anything to say on this matter? Okay, we'll close public hearing. Commissioners, anybody have any questions for staff or for anybody else?
I have a question for staff, but I don't know if they know. Was it approved as an R19 MPD? And if so, it doesn't, I don't know if we need to change the zoning. It wasn't, that's why. All right. Thank you.
Anybody else? If anybody has anything to say on this matter? Okay, we'll close public hearing. Commissioners, anybody have any questions for staff or for anybody else?
I have a question for staff, but I don't know if they know. Was it approved as an R19 MPD? And if so, it doesn't, I don't know if we need to change the zoning. It wasn't, that's why. All right. Thank you.
Brandon, I'm not sure if this is the right question or the right time to ask about this, but the final item on our agenda, I could not tell where on the map that was. Is this part of this annexation?
No, no. So if we go back out, go, sorry, go back this slide. So, sorry, once again, I don't have a pointer, but you can see where Quiet Valley is. You can see the city limit lines with Highway 6 that converge. So just north of that. I'll see if I can not blind anybody. So here is the annexation proposal. The Johnson subdivision sits right here.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I, yeah.
No worries.
I just couldn't find the last one.
Thank you, Brandon. Any comments or discussion points with the, any commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make the motion if you're ready to entertain one.
I'd like to hear and see if anybody else has any questions or comments.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Joseph.
I move the planning commission recommends approval of the minor Goodwin annexation as, as recommended by staff, subject to staff's findings and conditions and with the zoning designation of rural residential.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Let's have a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
You guys got up easy.
Well, depends on which situation you're talking about. End of the year.
Okay.
He's been very patient as additional properties were consulted.
Oh, I was referring to the teaching of her children.
Oh, I can sit back down if...
Yeah, yeah.
So this is, this is a zone change for the Warner Flower Farm?
Yes, and so I think all of these items are queued up for July 11th. I'm looking at Dave, July 11th, correct, for these items?
Next Tuesday.
Yeah. This is a unique application. I don't want to go into too much of the history, since we have the applicant here tonight. I appreciate him being present. This is a piece of property that is owned by the Catholic Church. Let's go to the next slide, please. It's there off of 1400 East. It has a home, and then the majority of it is vacant that's been used on and off for agricultural purposes over the years. I'm told that it's one of the remainder pieces of the larger estate properties that were up on the south bench as this area developed. The applicant has come forward, and he's interested in running a wholesale nursery that would specialize in flowers. I'd be more than happy to let the applicant give you more details and answer any questions you might have specific to the use. But when the DRC looked at it and his request, it's, it's unique, and I think it'll fit well in the area. There are a few things that caused concern for them. One of them was the arrangement of the lots. It used to be in three separate parcels. The applicant and the church have since taken the steps with the county to get those combined into one. And then the other was that it would be contingent upon a rezone to the RR, which would allow the wholesale nursery as a permitted use, hence the request that we've got here before you tonight. And so the request would be, if we go to the next slide, the area is currently R19, and so just the outlined areas that are owned by the church and under contract to the applicant would be rezoned to the RR to accommodate the proposed use. Any questions for staff or for staff?
I have a question for you. Staff recommends approval. Your estimation is an RR zone, and R19 can, like, nice next to each other and coexist peacefully, and everyone gets to enjoy their property rights?
I would believe so. I don't have a slide prepared that shows like a side-by-side table of the uses that are permitted, one versus the other. I think based on the history of how the property's been used and the properties, remaining properties have developed around it, I don't foresee an issue.
Forsee an issue with this applicant or foresee with what it could be in the future?
We can definitely pull that up. If you don't mind pulling up Spanish Fork's website, we'll pull up the code. Some of the things that are listed in the RR are going to be tied to the acreage, and so there's definitely some animal rights that would increase with the change from R19 to the RR.
Is RR consistent with the city's general plan?
So the general plan, that's a great question, is actually medium-density residential, which the R19 is consistent with that.
But if RR does not?
As far as the consistency table, I'd say no, but as far as the uses and enjoyment of the property, I'd say yes, there's some similarities, hence the existing single-family residents on the property.
Did the DRC analyze this issue in making that recommendation?
This and others, yeah. They discussed it two or three? Two or three times? If we go to 15, Part 3, and then go to 16, and then if you'll select, it's the top one, agricultural and rural residential. So there's a list of agricultural uses that are spelled out here. Obviously, number seven is the existing use that we can continue, and then the requested use that they're looking at is number six. I believe the applicant has a contractual five-year lease on the property, and so in the foreseeable future, it wouldn't necessarily change, but it's definitely something we can talk through if there's some uses that cause you concern.
I mean, I think the use that would cause concern is animal husbandry going on livestock if those are brought into that area. I mean, that would kind of exist.
Today, in the R19 zone, they could bring in livestock.
Do they have that right?
It would just be tied to the size of the property, and so you need, the property's 2.2 acres, so you need at least a half acre to set aside for the home, and then the remaining half acre increments.
Do they already have that right?
Yeah.
What about number eight? Dogs barking outside or...
So those would be subject to site plan approval and would take into effect the layout and arrangement of the site, but that's a good, that's a good concern.
I'm also concerned about 10. 11 is vague. How tall can that grain mill be next to someone's house?
It'd be subject to the height restrictions of the RR.
Which RR?
We could pull that up. If you go to the Section 40 RO Residential Office and then scroll down to the very bottom. Oh, go, sorry. Keep going up. A little bit further, please. All right, so RR, you can see, has a maximum height of 35 feet, which is the same as the R19.
Same height, somebody could build their house to anyway.
One thing that occurred to me is that the use that they're proposing is wholesale flowers. I don't know how much parking will be required for equipment and trucks that would be there. Would it also allow for any, any regular, well, any, what's the term that we want to Would it be open to the public to go and purchase?
No, it will not function as a retail.
Only as?
Just for wholesale.
But it could, right?
Well, according to this, it could. That was, that was why I was wondering.
It could not.
Which one are you looking at, Joseph?
It could not.
In the RR, it could not be a nursery, a retail nursery?
It's a wholesale.
Okay.
So trucks, trailers, big, really big orders would be semi-truck. Mostly trucks.
The applicant's here, right?
Yes.
Okay. We'll do that when we...
Will you go to the R19 permitted uses? I just want to see how...
So it's going to be the section below, oh, go up, number 20. So single-family municipal facilities, excuse me, and churches.
We scroll down next, I guess.
Okay. Any questions for Brandon? So I'd like your, from the applicant, if we could.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
Good evening. I'm Reed Warner. So the Warner Farm, Flower Farm, it's actually named under Fiori Violi is the name of the business. As far as some of the concerns for the wholesale, wholesale nursery is where it falls under for code. What we're doing is, is just that we sell our flowers as part of a collective, and it's called Picklink. We sell across the Wasatch Front. So the primary markets that we have, we have a market in Midvale, and we have a market in Farmington. So we transport our flowers there. Occasionally, we'll have orders that are brought back down to Spanish Fork for local florists. They will come and pick them up there, but it's meant to be a growing space and a storage space for, for flowers and processing. That's it. No major trucks. We're, we're too small. I don't even have, I have a tractor, but all of our fields are so small, our beds are three foot wide by 40 feet long. So we use walk-behind tractors to, to work the area. So even major equipment isn't being used other than to move topsoil around, things of that nature.
Will this be open fields or this be greenhouses or...
We have requested a greenhouse, and it's not really a greenhouse, it's a hoop house or a high tunnel. So it's just a plastic-covered structure just for weather protection. So it's not like a polycarbonate, full-heated, air-conditioned greenhouse, it's just a high tunnel. And that, that request is part of the initial plan. It's 30 feet wide, 80 feet long. I've discussed with every surrounding neighbor that touches it and got their feedback, and I didn't hear a single negative comment. They seem to be thrilled with the idea that a vacant lot that was full of weeds was being used and maintained. So for us, it was a great opportunity, and for the organization, the community, we feel like it's been a welcomed engagement. I had a number of volunteers from around the neighborhood to even come out and help and learn how to do flowers and different stuff like that. So we've been thrilled with what we've been able to do so far.
So is, is this seasonal flowers? Obviously, I guess, if you don't have greenhouses, there'll be things that can be done in the area.
Yes. So the, the high tunnel basically allows us to just extend the season is, is all it's really for. Extend the season and protect some of the, the more tender, vulnerable flowers.
What about, Commissioner Minnall asked a little bit about the, the traffic that'll be coming out of there with deliveries and that. What do you see that volume or what kind of?
All the delivery and everything goes to my house. I live right there. All the deliveries of any seeds, fertilizer, any of that stuff would go there, or I would pick it up in my personal truck or trailer and bring it in. We did bring in road base and gravel to prepare some of the area, so we had high, you know, dump trucks come and bring it in, and then we used get steers to move it around and get it all prepped. This area, wow, right here is more of that parking utilization space. Back in the back is where we've stored our topsoil, and then we just move it back and forth. Currently, this is planted in flowers, this is being prepped for next season, and that's also where the greenhouse would go.
How tall's the greenhouse?
It's 15 feet tall. I'm happy to answer any other questions that you have. We're thrilled about the opportunity, so...
The property will still be owned and by the Catholic Church?
It is. I have a five-year lease with them.
Yeah, they, they're, they're all on board.
They are. I, in fact, working with the city, we were able to jump on a call discussing the parcels, the way it used to be, three separate parcels, the benefit of bringing it into a single parcel and moving it to rural residential. They were curious what that would do to the value, what it would do to their future endeavors if they wanted a church or anything else on it, and felt that that would all be consistent with rural residential. And if needed, they could propose at the end of this to take it back to R19.
When is, you said five years, five years from today?
Five years from January 23, so when, 2028 is when, December 2028 is when that'll expire.
To operate the nursery?
It is. And we'll have a one-year notification if that will be extended or rescinded, because it'll take a good six months or more to move everything off.
Do we have built-in extension options on the lease?
We do.
To...
Well, to review, to review for another five years. And after that, I don't know, you know, let's see, I'll be 68 at that point. I don't know how much I really want to be running nurseries by then.
Plenty more flowers to grow.
So we don't anticipate much traffic. What we've done so far has been one day a week for, for florists to pick up. Normally, they're there for 15 to 20 minutes and they could drive away. Currently, we have eight florists in the local area that are part of our collective. Most of them go to Midvale, pick up their stuff when they're doing their other rounds, but several of them would like to start utilizing this for their local pickup. Any other question?
I think that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder did a great job of providing, I think, the fundamentals on the application and that type of thing, but maybe just a little bit more background on how staff has looked at this, and I'm not trying to necessarily be persuasive at all, but we received a building permit application, I think, for the greenhouse?
Yeah, for the shed.
For the shed. And that's what got us looking at the use of the property and trying to make some decisions. First of all, about how we as staff felt about the idea of a flower farm being here. Immediately, we were concerned about this being a high-traffic use, thinking that this would have some type... First of all, about how we as staff felt about the idea of a flower farm being here. Immediately, we were concerned about this being a high-traffic use, thinking that this would have some type of a retail component. So learning that that wasn't the case was an important hurdle for us to get over as staff. As was mentioned, we spent a number of weeks deliberating on how to approach it. In short, after thinking about creating maybe a new zoning district, that would be like an urban farming zoning district. Exploring ways to change maybe the text of the R one-nine zone or some of the other residential zones with that zone to accommodate what we're looking at here. And taking into account what I think might be the most impactful thing that somebody could do in the rural residential zone that you can't do now in the R one-nine zone, which is simply have more large animals than one per every half acre, which is the current limit. In the rural residential zone, that same limit doesn't apply. We do not see that necessarily as a likely scenario here at all. So understanding that, that potential risk with simply changing the zoning. The Development Review Committee got comfortable with this recommendation with the idea still that we do expect the use of the property someday to change. So where we use the rural residential zone, as was the case with the annexation that you made a recommendation on, it's kind of a holding zone. That a property can remain in until somebody has some type of a proposal to permanently develop the site. We feel like that's appropriate here. Take this for what it's worth, but more often than not, that's when neighbors get concerned. It's when the alfalfa field or the rural residential use gets changed and somebody wants to put homes on it. That's seemingly when we hear the most concern from a neighborhood. We think that potentially this could be a, a great, a great thing for the neighborhood, something neighbors will appreciate having. Obviously, that depends a lot on how it's operated, but that's partly at least why we've supported the proposed change to the rural residential zone.
Dave, a question that has arisen in my mind as we've talked about this, since it is an RR zone, are there conditions and rules that would govern? This is a pretty small area inside of a residential area. It's about the largest piece of undeveloped ground in that area. And if it's RR, will there be any kinds of protections for the surrounding neighbors for smells? Hours of operation? You know, I don't know that, since they're flowers, they need fencing and stuff. But are there, are there those kinds of things that need to be considered if, if this is, if this is passed? Or, because RR, we're generally talking about something that's out in the county where the rest of the county is, is RR too, rather than in the middle of town. So I wonder if we, is there any kind of protections for those neighbors? I guess that's what I'm asking. If there were to be something that you weren't always egregious?
Perhaps in a couple of different ways. And neither of these would be fun to pursue. First of all, through just regular code enforcement action. We do have regulations about nuisances. We define nuisances in certain ways. Barking dogs, for example, we, we deal with that all over the community and we have ways to measure that and to determine when it's a problem and when it's not. And also, there could be civil action brought against somebody if, if a neighbor feels like they're being adversely impacted by the use. Not, not easy routes to pursue, but yes, there are some protections that would be in place here certainly for neighbors. We're not talking about a situation, for example, where we had some discussion about ag protection areas that can, that can protect occasionally the agricultural operations.
I don't think it means the minimum acreage, correct?
Not even close. And we, and we would not suggest that that come into play here. So I just mention that to say, no. None of those protections from a nuisance claim or the like are being contemplated here.
So are the concerns, are the main concerns because we're putting it in a zone that if they stop being a flower production area, they have some other rights to the area that could become a nuisance?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's it.
Because to me, I'm like, this is great. What's the big, like, I want to live next to a flower farm. And I think it's kind of cool to change something that to rural residential, but I guess I can see your concerns.
Before we go any further, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody else that's here to speak on this case?
Then let's go into public hearing.
We were, oh, we weren't in public hearing?
No, we have.
I thought I was already in a public hearing, please come up.
Scott Barnes and my wife, Mary Barnes, is behind me. We live right there on that little ninety-degree turn. The farm's down here. Your concerns about them bringing in seven hundred and ninety-two tons of chicken manure? Not going to happen. There used to be a house right here, the Morleys live there. You might know Jed Morley, the family's been around for a while. They had horses back there and there was horse manure there all the time. Where we lived with the winds blowing, we never smelled anything at all. But the comment I really want to make is, on a positive note, is that Yulet Warner, the wife of, of Reed, has got a fantastic green thumb. Their house is an example of what this field's going to look like. They've got flowers and flowers and flowers. And we, in our house, living right next door to them, we have some of their flowers that we have absorbed into our yard to make our house beautiful as well. So my only comment is, is that the green thumb of Yulet Warner and the brown thumb from working on the dirt from Reed will really make this a very beautiful area. And my only regret is, is that the thistles, that little, that real ugly weed that has that purple flower, the flower of, of Scotland, the thistle, will not be growing there anymore. We'll have to go further down the road to find them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello, how are you? My name's Nathan Burston. I live at thirteen fifty-five East, fifteen twenty South, this house right here. So I share a property line on my north and east side completely. We're the ones that built that house, so we were there the whole time. That whole area has been a nuisance since we moved in. The, the weeds are uncontrollable. The rodents there get in my yard, they tear it up, the weeds get in my yard. I burned that field down once, if you're aware of that happening in the past, that was me. So I try to also, I try to also shovel this sidewalk right here during the snow. But that's, can't be done because the sunflowers grow so long and high, the snow comes down, plows them down, then they're covering the sidewalk. That whole place is just a disaster. And I, and it's also a huge safety issue, not only with me burning it down again, but the weeds would grow so high around the corner, you couldn't see around the corner. And cars would have to inch clear out into fourteen hundred, which is a higher speed zone, to try to see around the field and the weeds. So from my perspective, from where I'm at and from what I see and from the dangers I possess to that field, this is a very, very, very welcome change. I don't care about what he does there with the flowers. I don't care about the smells that come off the flowers. I don't care if he uses it for commercial production or whatever. The, the changes that he are making are beautifying the area. They're helping the neighbors, they're helping the city. I have no objection whatsoever to anything that he does in that area. I just want to make sure that you're aware of that, so, thank you.
Great, thank you both. Anybody else? I'll close public hearing. Commissioners, any other thoughts or questions?
I just wanted to comment, well, in addition to the support from the neighbors, which is always fantastic to hear, some of the concerns about possible changes of use. It sounds like there's some safeguards, for example, the height of the grain mill, how many animals can be on the property. So even if it was changed, I feel like there's some safe guardrails that will prevent any kind of strife if that happens in the future.
In addition, there's another safeguard. The landowner has only provided at least to this particular individual to do this particular thing. So that's, that is another safeguard.
Anything else? Okay, I'll look for a motion.
I move that we recommend to the city council, the zone change, the city council approve the zone change for the Warner Flower Farm subject to the findings and conditions.
Second.
Motion is second, some vote, all in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you all for your comments. I'll go now to the city council and we'll go on to our next agenda item, which is preliminary plat reapproval.
Yes. As we previously discussed, the location is just north of Quiet Valley. A couple of years ago, the applicant did come before the city, the planning commissioner and the city council for approval. This is a master plan development, so this will require city council action. There's no changes, let's go ahead and advance to the next slide, excuse me. So this is the layout that was previously approved. And as it was presented to the Development Review Committee, there were no proposed changes to the lot size or count. But if you do look, sorry, I keep jumping ahead. So fifty-three residential lots and the zoning is already in place. It's an R one fifteen zone. And so the reason for utilizing the master plan development is to address some of the odd corners that the property has, but also provide a variety of lot sizes. If you had the opportunity, opportunity, excuse me, to look at the conditions, number three and four were comments that came up leading to the DRC meeting and in the DRC meeting. And so if we look at the next slide, please. So there's this little tail here, when this first went through, and the applicant is here and he can probably correct any information that I don't recall exactly. But if we go back one slide, there's a large area along the railroad tracks. And the first go-around for approval, I think it was undetermined as far as ownership and whether or not that could be utilized as part of the subdivision. And so number three is pertaining to that issue. And my understanding is that staff has done some research and there's the potential to include that, which would net two additional lots in the subdivision. But in order for that to happen, the additional railroad dedication is then made to Spanish Fork City. And then the fourth condition, which my understanding is still under review, or is it settled? Were a thumbs up on that one? So if we jump to the next slide, please. It's kind of hard to see, but there's a little square in lot six right here in the second phase. It's an existing cell tower that has a lease and the right to stay there. And so the first approvals given to the subdivision included that within the lot. And then there were specific wall requirements and access requirements. This go-around, the applicant did raise the question to the city, if we'd be interested in having that dedicated to the city. So then that would not be the responsibility of the property owner to maintain. The DRC did discuss that over, hence condition number four. And at this point, the city would be comfortable with having that usement area dedicated to the city. Any questions for staff?
I have one question. I have one question about the property on that east side. Who owns that, that narrow stretch along the railroad now?
The applicant does.
So?
So the applicant worked with the title company.
So that's been done, okay.
So it would potentially increase what we're seeing now for fifty-three lots or fifty-five?
Yes.
By, by shifting everything over into that space and adding a new lot on the top and bottom?
I believe they were adding the other lots, is that correct? Or have you given thought to where those might be?
We could just be shifting lot lines around to fit two more lots in without really, without expanding that boundary that you see there, the outside boundary. And those, those changes would happen.
Why don't you come up to my microphone?
We are, we're ready to go on phase one. We're excited about, about the market conditions improving and being able to go build some homes. So, so phase one, we have an approved final plat and we're ready to go and don't want to change that one. So any additional lots would be done from a reconfiguration of phase two, of just shifting lot lines around and until we can, can make extra lots fit based on a little bit of extra acreage in the project. Does that make sense?
And you represent who?
Fieldstone Homes, Randy Smith with Fieldstone.
Still Fieldstone?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions I can answer for you?
I have a question for Brandon. Is the proposed change still consistent with an MBD in the R one fifty?
Yes.
Okay, I know you just went through all this, but I just need to, I just need a little bit of reiteration. Why do we have the tab out and then that?
Because the, the rest of this area was a question mark.
Oh, okay.
And so this is the layout that was utilized with the first preliminary.
That is the last one, that's the old one.
But if we go back a slide.
That's the one now.
So this would show the entire area along the railroad track.
Okay.
Great question.
We can't really explain the tab still, though, right? I mean, that was just a weird aspect of the original design.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for the applicant? Okay. This is not a public hearing, so any questions or comments from any of the commissioners? Okay.
Pretty straightforward.
I entertain a motion.
Do I move that the proposed preliminary plat be recommended for approval based on the findings and conditions that are listed here from staff?
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
The motion is second, so a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So motion passes. Thank you, go in front of the city council.
Go build some houses.
Yeah.
It's been a while.
They're going to sell like that.
David Brandon, we have an agenda item for a discussion. What do you have, you want to discuss?
We're here at your disposal.
I don't have any talkings, well. I did want to bring up, me and John talked last planning meeting about maybe doing a field trip in the next month.
Again?
Well, no. Sorry. You could go previous if you want to. Let's, maybe that can be like a, a side trip. To, to go check out, I mean, John, do you want to look at, you want to go check out some of the other parking? The other cities are doing areas that they're doing well and areas that might be a concern.
We did that some time ago and looked at just one or two other places. There seems to be more and more pressure for us to look at our parking ordinance again. And as we get higher density, it's definitely going to be an issue. And it's one that is going to come up every time unless we come down hard on something and say, you know what? If you want to build in, in Spanish Fork, this is our parking issue. And I think it's a good way to go because a developer that comes in needs to know what his costs will be. Every time that we say we're going to hold two-point-five or something like that, then they complain, well, we're losing the building areas, which is true. But that's no different than all of the other things that we ask for. And every time that we have someone new come in, they say, oh, but there's these studies, there's these studies, there's these studies. We even actually had a, a very good. We even actually had a very good discussion with the group from BYU who came and looked at our ordinance and looked at all the other different areas. And it came down to, well, you guys are pretty good. You know, 2.5 is about right for our city, at least that's how it came out. And when we talked about, you know, well, maybe we could reduce that for studio apartments or for one-bedroom apartments and stuff like that. I think we need to really decide if that's something that we are going to stick hard to or if we are going to go back and revisit that. Because if some of those projects that we've already been contacted about in the last year or a year and a half come back, they're going to come back with the same ask. We had it just last month, or us two months ago, this height, the city council, last month on the development on South Main Street, that they wanted less density for parking. And we were talking about, that's a possibility if you have certain conditions. And I would like to have staff or someone look at these places where there is less parking. And I don't think that it's fair to take us close to a university, you know, where there's a lack of vehicles. We do have an area that we may want to look at as things progress with Center Street and what may go on there. But in general, in the other places where mass transit isn't available and stuff like that, let's find out what's going on, you know? Let's see if we can come up with some alternatives that may make sense and maybe relook at some of the things that are being done. I've been through multiple cities, looking at different places. And some of the things that we don't allow in Spanish Fork don't look so bad after a few years, after trees and other landscape grows up around it and stuff like that. I'm talking about parking underneath the...
The covered parking?
The covered parking, just the covered parking rather than garages. There's issues with that. And I think there's issues with it being in front of the buildings. But it'd be good to go take a look at it and discuss why it is or isn't desirable and whether that's something that Spanish Fork needs to adopt or are we good?
There's one of those right in Springville.
And if we're good, let's stop dancing around the issue and come down hard on, okay, this is it. And I think it'd be helpful for those developers that are going to come knocking at the door again.
There's a good example of that, actually, right in Springville, south of Fourth South. Like toward, I think that it would be worth it to look at because I'm, I mean, I'm personally...
That's one of the places.
I'm personally in favor of if it's behind the buildings, not on the road. I think those covered parking spots are good and it keeps people from turning enclosed parking area into a storage space when it's hard to, it's hard to enforce, but...
It counts as parking, it's really storage.
Right.
I think some good examples, maybe of positive and negative, we could find in cities that have had, you know, different than us, would be nice to see. Then we could take that in mind. I mean, not everybody's got the same constraints that Spanish Fork has. We don't want to just go off what our city does, but I think it'd be good for some of the commissioners to get visuals of where it's worked and where it hasn't.
And I think podium parking is something else that we may want to be aware of. I don't know that it's necessary, but it's been proposed now once. And it has been brought up a couple of other times on smaller scale. And that may be something that somebody's willing to do if the space is limited, you know? So I don't know how, I don't know how we get more information if we don't go take a look at some of those things. And I'd be willing, you know, I hope that the other commissioners would be willing to take a little time sometime in the late afternoon or evening to do that.
We were talking, we thought, me and John personally thought Joe is too busy for that, but maybe things start, we're not as in the fiestades mode in Spanish Fork.
And it might be a great time to get out of Spanish Fork.
No, it's a great time to be in Spanish Fork.
I agree. And I do, I do agree also that it's time to really send a recommendation to the city council about parking adjustments if we're going to make some. And something we've talked about before is adjusting the parking for townhomes and for higher density in different ways.
Would that be something staff could set up for us?
Of course, right?
I think, and I think along those same lines, if any of us can can think of a place in Spanish Fork where we've got a high-density situation without a parking problem, show us it.
Yeah.
Because we talk about it all the time of what are we going to do? How many spaces are in the driveway? What can we, you know, visitors, parking and everything else? I have yet to see the development in Spanish Fork that we don't have a problem with on-street parking. And it may be a thing of volunteer parking. It might be that someone might say, man, if I have to park inside of my development, I'm three blocks away. And I'd just as soon park on the street and walk around a fence to get to my apartment or to my townhome. And if that's true, if people are parking on the street and there are open parking spaces in the parking lot, then we need to think of ways that we can resolve that issue to get parking off of the street.
I think we sit on that north.
Yeah. Yeah, on the east apartments.
When there's places open behind, but that's allowed.
Well, and the question is, is if it's a well-designed development, on-street parking actually is not a bad thing, except for snow removal. Because there's a lot of really great, good examples of good on-street parking, but we've got our snow removal issues. So then we have to have, you know, make sure that they can move into parking if it's a high-density place.
And maybe we just need some education, Dave. Maybe we need some education about good and bad practices, I don't know.
Well, I think, I don't think there's anything wrong with what we've been discussing up to this point.
No.
I like the direction we've gone. I like that we've stood to that model we've had. I think, I mean, the developers are always going to push for less because it's money and it's revenue. But that doesn't mean it's what is right for Spanish Fork. And I don't know, one thing I'd also add is if a developer has that same table in it, in their presentation, just tell them to take that table out before they present parking to us.
And you say that because, John, you used the phrase hard line. I wouldn't quite put it that way, but the city has a standard.
Yeah.
And that hasn't been changed and that's where we're at. And that doesn't stop somebody from asking us to change it. And that's what happens every time we see a project, you know, we get that. It's, we've had the same, you know, so to speak, kind of approach made many times at staff level by way of people providing their justification for there being less parking. And the answer's been the same for years, right? This is what it is. I really appreciate everything about what you guys clearly are thinking about and what's been said tonight. A couple of immediate thoughts. First of all, in terms of identifying a parking problem, which is that you have a need for more vehicles and spaces to accommodate them, that's hard to do during daylight hours, even during the summer. That happens generally later in the evening at times like that. So I don't know how much necessarily we can glean from getting out and about in the community on that particular issue, on many other things that you've brought up. You're reminding me of what we did back in 2014, 15, 16, when the R-4 Zone concept was discussed. And we went with the planning commission then over the period of many different weeks, on a lot of different trips around to look at a lot of different things. And I absolutely think that the commission at the time really appreciated that. They came a long way in terms of what they felt was important and was a must-have, for example, while also maybe letting go of some of the other concerns that they they had, totally in favor of everything you're talking about. Of course, I get to drive, that understood.
Can we fix that?
My only question, I guess, is when and how much time are you guys willing to give? It's hard to make a series of two-hour trips out. We get four hours, maybe a little more than that. You know, we could do a lot more. In the past, we've done that evening hours and for the next couple of months, that works fine. We've done like an early Saturday kind of a thing, which sometimes also...
I think in the evening would be better of a weekday. That'd be your more...
Yeah, it's a matter of whatever.
Residents are there and that's, I mean, it might not be easier for our schedules maybe so much, but that's when you're going to see the truest example of what you're, what you'd want to be looking at day in, day out.
Just tell us when, but truthfully, I think it would be more meaningful for everybody if we got more than a couple of hours at once.
I think so.
The last thing, by way of the timing, we're right back at it. There is a group that will present in your August meeting, a concept that they have. And a very seasoned group, tens of thousands of multifamily units across the country. And I don't doubt what they say. And they certainly believe that they don't, I believe them by way of their conviction of feeling like 2.5 parking spaces is too many for what they have. So they will give you the full court press in August on that and some other things about our design requirements. So I look forward to the conversation, oh, excuse me, at least in part as a way to talk about some of those things that are really hot buttons for developers that they don't want to do, that we have to compel them to do. Frankly, some of them I feel really strongly about. It's just me. But again, love to do it. I don't know how you want to go about finding a time, but if you want to look at calendars now, we could do that or just whatever.
Before we decide on a time, I want to ask you about one thing. And that is, is that in several other cities, and a couple of them just south of us, there are developments that have incorporated RV parking and other parking that is locked or whatever. Sometimes it's just gravelled rather than paved. And by the way, in Springville, that one has a place too. And, you know, that's an amenity and I know it costs some money. And I know that, you know, it's going to be part of your HOA or whatever. But I don't know of any of those in Spanish Fork, you know? And when we start talking about people that have done things all over the country and everything else, they haven't done it in Spanish Fork or else they don't know what we are asking. And along the Wasatch Front, I don't think we're that different. With the exception of where there are, where there are colleges, as simple as that. You know, people who can't afford to be permanent residences, residents, residents don't have access to a vehicle at times. So it's more of a, it's more of a cultural thing than it is what they would like to have. And I happen to be one of those people now that have one more vehicle than I can drive. And there's a lot of families that have an extra vehicle. And we are kind of numb to that fact and we say, oh, well, if it's in a, if it's in a multi-unit dwelling, you know, somehow they don't, they're not going to have those things. You know, and to say they're not going to have toys and they're not going to have the trailers with the wave runners on them right now and stuff like that is just ignoring our population. And, you know, so we need to take a look at some of those possibilities. And I don't say that it's all it has to be that way. But we're always looking at the smaller chunks and we're always looking at, like for instance, if you've got a one-bedroom apartment, the chances that you're going to have more than two vehicles are a lot less. And maybe you can drop that. Maybe you can drop it from two, two and a half if there's only one bedroom. But one bedroom doesn't mean there's only going to be one vehicle. That's for dang sure. You know, so anyway, I think the only way that we can do that is to look at the places, like what we were talking about, to look at the place and say, okay, who's doing it right? And what isn't good? I'd kind of like to just take it right, and I guess I probably will in the next day or two now, as the project that's gone over that Chris Childs started. You know, with the four stories. You know, that's coming along pretty well. And we have those parking issues. And if you remember, he's got some standalone parking and some parking underneath the buildings. And he's got the businesses that are going to have some shared parking. I thought that that was, you know, a unique way to come about it. And I think that he finally came, I think that those comply with them, two and a half, don't they?
They do.
It took, I gotta tell you. That was, it was a challenge getting those folks there.
Yeah.
And the shared parking is what...
See, that may be one of the good things to look at.
That was the applicant.
But that was tough.
Were you?
Yeah, it came for all you all and we really made it.
Well, it's working. It's working, at least from what I can see.
Is it? None of them occupied.
Well, nobody's there, yeah.
Yeah, none of them occupied.
John said it's...
But the interesting thing is, is that with those restrictions, they've built them. That's what I'm, that's what I'm getting at. You know, they're there, they're built, or they are being built and they will be occupied in the next few months, some of them.
Soon.
And so, you know, let's not think that we're always at the end of the rope here. Let's find a comfortable place.
Well, no, that's a good example because that fits in, it's got a high density. It fits into our parking requirements, fits in all of our requirements. And it's going to be a very profitable project for that developer.
And it looks good.
And it looks good, it complies. And others might just want to be cutting some corners. And there's no reason for that. If everything's followed the way we need it to be followed, we can hopefully be a win-win situation for everybody. I think we should look at it.
So we do have a few issues we're talking about, do we? And one of them has, yeah, so let me reiterate.
Are you changing?
RV parking.
Oh.
No, I mean, a few things, like the RV parking. Because we know that the biggest problem with, well, there's two problems with Somerset.
I think you're only going to see RV parking though, where they have, the places I'm thinking of that, John, is they have the odd-shaped lot.
Yeah.
It's kind of taken up a weird pie shape.
Yes.
In those, because it's... They do charge that as a revenue for them, but it's not worth the expense they put into it.
Right.
Well, the hard part is like if you're looking at the, one of our biggest parking problems is Somerset Village, right?
Yes.
They, all the RVs and the buses and the boats and all that, they're all parked on Canyon Road. And then there's the going and visiting people there, finding their little parking spaces and walking along.
It's almost impossible.
And are they hard to, yeah, get to and are there any available? Anyway, those are, yeah. But that's a different issue, I think, than higher density. Townhomes versus, townhomes versus apartments.
I think that if you're ready to list off everything, that would be helpful for me. But everything that you've mentioned, they're completely complementary things that by visiting a lot of the same projects, we can look at a lot of different elements of how their design, you know, from a layout perspective, including, you know, with their vertical construction and that type of thing, so.
We have a couple of...
You mentioned a time. For me, I think it would be before, after our next planning meeting. And between the August and September commission meetings is when I would propose to do it.
You guys aren't trying to squeeze vacations in before kids go back to school.
Let's send an email out with some titles, yeah.
Yeah. In fact, if you don't mind when you have a moment, just shoot us a note with times and dates. Tuesdays and Wednesdays, incidentally, just for me, they're good because they're already blocked out to some degree for your meeting and city council meeting, so.
Oh, Tuesdays and Wednesdays are not good for you?
Are good.
Tuesdays and Wednesdays are...
Oh, not, okay.
But like I said as well, we've had good luck even with weekends. If anybody's willing to do that. Brandon gets excited when I talk to him about Saturday stuff.
Yeah, I'm saying, I don't like Sat, going on a Saturday. Okay, can I bring up a totally different issue that I would love to go on a field trip for?
The last thing, can I mention this? If there are specific sites that you want us to look at, email those to us as well and we'll get those. I am a route wizard. So I will put together the best, most efficient way to visit anything you guys want to look at.
I want to go to that one in South Springville that I brought up so many times.
I think I know the one you're talking about, but... I think I know the one you're talking about, but...
We could reach out to the city and get the data behind it.
We could, the plans, see their actual parking ratio and all of that kinda stuff, so. That was it, Shauna, sorry.
Okay, my other issue that I really would love to have, I mean, this is the priority, but I would love to have a presentation from that developer that came to the APA conference last year, not as a spiel for him to come, his group to come to Spanish Fork as a developer, but I'd love to have him come and give us a presentation, talk to us about funding, talk to us about impact to the community and neighbors, and for the affordable workhouse, workforce housing. What do we call it in Spanish Fork? There's different terms for it everywhere, but you know what I'm talking about.
Adam Langford is the...
Yeah, and I would also really love to go on a field trip to his, the one he told me about in American Fork, because he said that's more, like, that's a better fit than the one we went to at the APA conference.
And there are a handful, incidentally, in American Fork that we might wanna hit with what we're already talking about, so.
And to me, I'm not pushing that we have to have this in Spanish Fork, but I do think we need to start having a conversation about looking to see what the options are for Spanish Fork.
I think the state legislature is pushing that we have to have it in Spanish Fork.
Just truthfully, that was gonna be my comment. We, the four of us in our office met today to talk about our moderate-income housing report that we have to have submitted.
Moderate.
By the first of August, and being able to talk about some things like what you're describing there, Shauna, some new approach to make workforce housing more affordable housing.
Don't mean to come with you and tell them to stay in their lane. Federalism and all that, local government does a better job.
We do it all the time, and it gets us nowhere. Here's the, here's the response that a lot of us in local government don't appreciate or agree with, but because we are subdivisions of the state, that is, cities as entities in the legislature's view, we are...
Did you choke?
We are, oh, I hear it all the time, all the time, so, yeah, it's just part of the fight.
I'm cursed, I can play both sides.
It's a curse. You could, but, top-down control's not going away when it comes to land use, it's moving in the other direction, so.
So, maybe let's be proactive about some good quality.
It can hurt, I completely think that's the approach that they should take.
And be grateful that most of our land is already developed.
There's a lot of ideas, but it's not your money.
Should I make a motion?
I have one other topic. Last planning commissioner had some comments made about people not knowing about the tracks line going out their land. That's, everybody in that area has been either notified or knows what's going on out there, right?
Yeah, I think I shared some correspondence with you guys by way of public comment period. Actually, I think they're two separate projects that relate to the question that was raised in the last meeting. First of all, people get notified in a variety of different ways when projects of all different types are contemplated from the start of something just being an idea to the end of the process, which is some kind of record of decision that says things can be funded and built. Certainly, an area that I think was being referenced, word is out, and it's great to have a forum and an opportunity whereby people can get engaged and provide input. Please, and I mean this for you as planning commissioners, please get informed about UTAs, environmental assessment that they're doing on the prospect of having commuter rail come south from Provo, with stops in Springville, Spanish Fork, and Payson. It doesn't take long to go to the website and provide your input. I think you could provide it as a businessperson, resident, planning commissioner, you know, whatever, all of the above. If there are particular issues that you think are worth noting and studying, please do it, both with that project and the environmental assessment that UDOT is conducting on the prospect of having a Center Street interchange.
I was trying, I watched the video of that today, and I was trying to figure out, I just want a link to click on to give my feedback, and it took me to a website that I, I'd watched the video of that meet, the Zoom meeting, but then I was like, I don't know where the button is to push to give my input, so...
I haven't been there yet, but...
You sent us the link to the website. I mean, may, well, it may not be discouraging, because all of you could maybe find it better than me, but...
But Dave, with that, my comment being that all the city sends out, that is duly noticed, everybody knows about that, something that UDOT might be planning, having the works, especially the video, the slide that was shown that meeting, that was from UDOT and not from the city. So, the comments that the city was putting a bus stop or something like that, or a train stop on somebody's land without notifying somebody, that was way off base. Now, it wasn't from the city, that was from another state entity.
It was, yeah. Maybe I'm remembering the comment a little bit differently, but this is the United States, right? I mean, things don't happen without property owners being engaged and informed and everything like that, so for me, it's a given that there is that involvement, there is that engagement. And frankly, there are times when properties are needed, and when that's the case, which sellers aren't willing, just compensation is provided, and that's how a society functions, in my opinion.
But that's rare.
It's rare for UDOT. It's much, much, much more rare even for Spanish Fork City.
Right.
That's right.
I mean, on our level, that's what I'm concerned about, is making sure that we're...
Exactly, yeah.
Doing the best we can on all that stuff.
Yep.
Any other points we have for the staff?
Just briefly, I wanted to put the Utah League of Cities and Towns Annual Conference on my fellow commissioners' radar, September 6th through 8th. I've been talking to the league a lot, because there's a big gap between all the training that's available for city council members, mayors, and then there's a huge gap for planning commissioners, and so they're gonna be doing some breakouts, in particular for planning commissioners, but also they have housing, transportation, coding, all the issues that we deal with, there'll be breakout sessions, and it's a fantastic conference.
September 6th through 8th?
Yep.
Is this different than, is this different than the other one I went to? That's the APA conference?
This is the Utah League of Cities and Towns.
September 6th through 8th?
Yep. And you don't have to attend every day, all day, but you can take a look at the agenda and the breakouts.
In the past, they've had a day that's been dedicated to land use stuff.
Oh, nice, okay.
I bet that's probably still the case, so if you could make one day, my guess is that's gonna be Thursday available to attend. I appreciate you mentioning that, that's getting close.
It is getting close.
We'll dig up more detail and get that sent out. We always ask that if you want us to register, you please help us do that before, like, the late fee deadline, that kind of a thing, but...
I'd been up there a couple of times, but not as a planning commissioner through other ways.
You were once, Richard.
Yeah, I went up with Richard once, went up with Mike's, you know, Mike, anyway. But I don't know that we've ever been invited as a commission to go. I've never received, you know, any kind of communication of when it was, or when it is going to be, or an agenda, and if so, some of that, you know, they'd like to have you, they'd like to have you pre-registered to go up.
You have to.
Yeah, so I'm saying if the commissioners are going to be invited, you know, let us know, and so we can get back to you and let you know if we'd like to attend and what sessions or what days.
You're invited.
Thank you.
I'll give you the details, and there's another training October, APA, it's also September, so towards the end of September.
Right.
In Ogden, which is totally focused on land use stuff.
Is that the one I went to?
More time, yeah.
Okay.
Is it Lehigh? Is that where it was, Shauna?
Yes, at the movie theater.
Yeah. We'll get you information on that as well, and if anything else like that comes up, we'll do the same thing. We have a training budget for the planning commission, so...
I wanted to ask if COE is available?
For some, probably not the League of Cities and Towns.
League, for sure.
I think it is.
You think it is?
Up in there too.
You know what I'm saying, two birds, one stone.
Oh, absolutely. It's certainly easier to justify the time, right?
Especially if the city...
Michelle, thanks, that is coming up. Where's the, we're halfway done with the year, right? Wow.
We're going on a new record here. Anything else?
Chairman, I really appreciate the discussion. I was worried sick that we were gonna shortchange Mr. Dilly on his last night here, and Ms. Martin on her first night here with a meeting that's gonna take less than an hour, so...
Don't get used to me.
Really appreciate the discussion.
This is a, this is a short meeting for us.
Sure does, it's my shortest meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Any motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Stand adjourned.